Sorry about that. I'm kinda new. We would like to have a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. So if you would like to stand, we are going to do so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Falls, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Moriarty. Mrs. Roberts.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Powers.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mrs. Pritchett.
Here. I would like to go a little bit of out of order. We have Dr. Anita Caswell here. She's going to introduce our musical selection for this afternoon. Dr. Caswell, thank you.
So I, it's my pleasure to be here, but I have a musical tonight, so I'm a little nervous. So I'm gonna get through this and then I'm gonna leave. You know, you can't say no to the school board, so. I'm here to talk about Men's Day that we have every year. We had our annual Men's Day, November the 20th, held at Jensen Beach High School. Men's Day was started in 2015, 2016 by former choir directors here, Mr. John Willis, who was at Hidden Oaks Middle School, and Mr. Shane Thomas, who was at Martin County. And they had the idea of bringing boys' choirs together from all of the schools. At that time, we only had men's choirs at Martin County High School, Jensen Beach, and South Fork. And then I happened to have one at my school, and Mr. Willis had one at his school. So our first venture was at the church, North Shore Church, out on US-1. We had a total of 70 boys. So that was 2015, 2016, which brings us up to 2024, 2025. This year, we had 165 young men come together from the high schools, and now all the middle schools have men's choirs. That first venture allowed everybody to come together and develop men's choirs, which helps recruit and keep our boys in choir when they leave middle school and they go to high school. And it is a beautiful sound, and I can always say that Mrs. Roberts is always there to support us, and we thank you for that. So this video that you guys are about to look at is the result of our venture from this year. We started with guest conductors, and then Mr. James Paul was our clinician for like four years, and now we've gone to being able to invite clinicians from around the world that work with our boys. So thank you for allowing us, and please, when we select our date for next year, we hope you guys will come and see. It's great to see that many young men up on stage. So thank you.
Thank you for coming, and have a wonderful evening. We appreciate it. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda with the following items added? Items added: 7.05. Items updated: 3.01, 3.02, 9.01, 10.01, 15.10, 18.02. Items removed: 19.03. And pulled and moved to action 10.01 calendar. So moved.
Again.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Five to nothing. Okay. So can I have a motion to approve the items of consent?
I move approval of the consent agenda with the exception of 10.01 that was moved to action.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five to nothing. All right. Move on here. So... We are going to move to board member discussion. Nope, okay, that was quick. Recognitions. Dr. Miller will present SPAM.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent. It's my pleasure to present a group who really needs no introduction to this board for sure. We have some representatives from SPAM who are here this evening. They would like to give you a little update as to what's been happening, and they even have a little invitation of something upcoming. To kick us off is the team captain, Zach Dean.
Good afternoon, distinguished board. Superintendent Michael Mayne, we have some slides to share with you today about what we've done in the past couple of months and what we're gonna be doing in the next few months. All right, first of all, my name's Zach Dean. I'm the student president of SPAM Robotics, your neighbors. I'm a junior at South Fork High School, and I'm in program currently. Yep, so this is just what we're doing. August 17th, we had a BattleBots event, which is really close to home for me because it's something I've picked up along with this program. So instead of playing games with your robots, you fight other robots to the death. It's very exciting, and it was very good for outreach, this event. I'm not sure how much we made off of it, but there was easily over 100 people, and we gained, I believe, three mentors and two students from this. We had, I think, four or five active students participate in this BattleBots event, and it helped us grow closer to each other, like a bonding experience. All right, now I'm gonna introduce Isabella, our student vice president.
Hello, I'm Isabella, student vice president. I'm a senior at Jensen Beach High School. On October 20th, we hosted a first LEGO League scrimmage where we had 15 teams that are local from Martin County participate and raise money for SPAM. This event was hosted at our facility and is run by mentors and students from SPAM. On December 14th, we also hosted a competition at Anderson Middle School, where we had 17 local teams participate in this competition, and it was also run by students and mentors from SPAM. It's a great competition to see all the kids that put in work over the first semester of school, see how they do in competition. And it also helps fundraise money for SPAM. Now I will introduce Cora, our social media lead.
Hi, I'm Cora. I go to Martin County High School. We recently did the Stuart Air Show. We had a booth that was both run by students and mentors. We demoed our robot, and we also made a paper airplane machine that we showcased. We also participated in STEM scavenger hunt, and this event also raised money for us as well. We also participated in the Martin County Christmas parade. We made our flow ourselves, and we had both high school and middle school students walk in the parade with us. It was a super fun activity, and I really... Now I will introduce Nicholas, who is our business lead.
Hello, school board members. I am Nicholas DeGrazia. I go to Martin County High School. This is my third year on the SPAM Robotics team, and I am our student business lead. So over Thanksgiving week, we provided a summer camp to the youth in our area where we taught them valuable STEM skills, and we used robots called Spike Bots, made out of Legos, to help like teach them the specifics of engineering. And over that two-day period of our summer camp, we had 12 students, and it helped fund our team greatly, and it helped us inspire the next generation of engineers along with helping our team. We had a mix of mentors and students who were involved in volunteering to help teach the youth in our area, and that's what we did for Thanksgiving. So a member of our team actually reached out to Congressman Brian Mast. He provided him with a sponsorship form and told him about our team. It was really great talking to him. We heard, and it was an honor to be able to tell him about our organization.
Back again. So the robot that we showed off at the air show and at our events is last year's robot. Every year, we have a new game and a new robot to build in six weeks. The new game comes out January 4th, and we have a public event at Clark, January 4th at Clark. They're having a breakfast, and then the kickoff, which is like right before we introduce our team a little bit, and then we have the game announcement. Right after the game announcement happens, we get to brainstorming. We get to prototyping, we get to building. That's a very exciting and nerve-wracking part. So everyone is welcome, by the way. I will see you all there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
We have a gift to show our appreciation for all your support.
Thank you. Stacy, would you like to say anything? You're welcome to.
Never miss a chance. As you can see, I mean, they are amazing young people, and we cover all the high schools, and plus our homeschoolers and private schools. We are looking at around 42 to 48 kids right now in our team, which is fantastic. We are hoping to get more, so that's always good. We are also starting our first tech challenge, middle school team, and they are actually competing right now. So keep thinking about us, these kids, we're pushing them and pushing them. We actually had Murray Middle and Anderson Middle actually came and demonstrated this past weekend, and it was wonderful. I want to get them in all the middle schools, so you know, keep pushing us into the schools, and we would love to keep getting that and getting those kids excited for First LEGO League because that's where these kids are coming from. And we've actually noticed that we have had a sharp decline in our student population of our students because we have not carried that through in our elementary and middle school. So we would love to have that conversation start again and definitely get them back in the middle school because I need more students like these, these wonderful kids. So thank you very much. You guys are wonderful, and we really appreciate everything you do for us. And come visit us, we're next door.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a nice Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Of cour-
Merry Christmas.
So Mr. Moore, can you update us on how that's working for arranging the field trips for robotics? Thank you.
So we have had several meetings with Stacy and her team, and so we have outlined a proposal that we'll be sharing with Superintendent Mayne when we come back. I spoke to Chief DeShazo about it earlier today, actually. We've outlined a program plan that will provide opportunities for our students to come here and do field experiences, very similar to how we do with the Environmental Studies Center on a rotation. We've worked on a scope and sequence of curriculum, and we have a program plan outline that we're gonna present to Superintendent and then bring to you, give you an update.
And so were we expecting that in the spring, or?
We were planning for next year.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to go to information-only reports. Student Representative Jamie Paulson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Starting off with Jensen Beach High School, the Falcons Spanish Honor Society sent $510 and 34 decorated stockings to children in Honduras, Bolivia, and Chile through the Christmas Stocking Project with Children's Impact Network. Jensen Beach High School National Honor Society members wrote 350 thank you and holiday cards for service members to send overseas as well as to local assisted living facilities. The city of PSL invited American Sign Language Honor Society to teach American Sign Language at their international festival during their Thanksgiving break. The Falcons were proud to represent Jensen Beach High School and Martin County Schools positively. As a result, the Coming Library has asked students at JBHS to partner with them to teach teens and adults about basic American Sign Language. Next, Martin County High School. Congratulations to the following debate students who brought home trophies in the November regional tournament. Nino Goiland first, Mason R. Nicolo C. Antoni W. in second place, Miranda Lubin in third place, Sarah Dekowski and Kayden Hartog in fourth place, Angelique V. in fifth place, and Macy Trail in sixth place. Congratulations to our DECA district qualifiers, Kayden M., Judy M., Caleb Santiago, Hutch Hughes, Morgan Williams, Jackson Wyatt, Cannon Griffin, Jake Van Vliet, Mallory B., Samantha K., Brendan Stemel, and Paul Stemel. DECA districts will be held on January 17th at Kaiser University in West Palm Beach. Due to the phenomenal success of the NHS Adoptive Family, each Christmas, the executive staff, under the leadership of Ella Crother, president voted to support three families this year, one of which is the Tiger family. Gifts will be wrapped by NHS members with personal notes being written to each family member. The Martin County Swim and Dive Team brought 16 swimmers to FHSAA Class 3A states last month, including girls Madeline Bussum, Sarah Dekowski, Lauren Feeney, Madison Feeney, Savannah Hill, Dianira Melendez, Julia Murphy, Doriellen Patton, and Claire Richard. Boys swimmers include Roman Watson, Danielle Romero, Braden Fior, Lincoln Salzar, Santiago Pacheco, Manuel Gonzalez, Ethan Spur, and Jackson Wyatt. The Girls 200 medley consisting of Julia Murphy, Madeline Bussum, Dianira Melendez, and Sarah Dekowski took seventh overall. Best Buddies participated in the annual Christmas parade in downtown Stuart on December 6th, building another amazing float for the second year in a row. Over 30 members of the organization attended and walked with the float, contributing greatly to the holiday spirit. The Martin County High School choral program would like to invite the community to their winter concert on Thursday, December 19th. The concert will take place at 7:00 PM in Martin County High School Auditorium. And next is South Fork High School. South Fork High School Drama students earned Superior Ratings at the District 15 Thespian Festival on December 7th. Michael Jones earned Superior Solo Musical and Superior Marketing. Holly Beers and Emery Wilcox, Superior Duet Acting. Mara Bryan, Superior Solo Musical. And Sabrina Zembrano, Superior Solo Musical. And Natalia Caraballo, Superior Solo Musical. The Key Club at South Fork High School celebrated its 30th birthday recently. The club hosted a For the Love of Reading Literacy event where members collected books and needed supplies for Rena's House of Blessings. Key club members also helped the Kiwanis Club with their Saturday with Santa event and created over 75 holiday cards and letters for senior citizens, which will be delivered along with a special performance by the Bulldog Band and Choir at the Sheridan Assisted Living Center. Our club members at South Fork have been volunteering with the Salvation Army during its bell-ringing campaign, embracing the spirit of the season and bringing joy to the community. Mrs. Kyle Goran has been nominated as a National Life Group Life Changer of the Year. Mrs. Goran is esteemed member of the Bulldog Campus, where she teaches math, coaches cost country, and volunteers with the National Honor Society and the renowned Bulldog Closet. She's extremely involved, and Martin County is blessed to have her. Varun Singh has been chosen at the 2025 Martin County Sunshine State Scholar Representative. The Sunshine State Scholar Program allows each school district throughout Florida to select its top 11th grade student in science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics STEM based on established criteria. These scholars, along with their parents, convene to receive recognition for their achievements. They also have opportunities to meet with representatives from Florida's colleges and universities, learn about STEM-related programs of study, and internships, and experience why Florida is the best state to learn and pursue an exciting career. John Smith has been a Dell Scholarship semifinalist. John has been an avid elective student for four years, demonstrating dedication, perseverance, and hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, moving on to our district update, Jennifer DeShazo and Derek Low, or just Derek Low.
Good evening, members of the board, Madam Chair Pritchett, Superintendent Michael Mayne. My name is Derek Low. I'm the coordinator of Public Information and Community Relations with the Martin County School District, and it's once again and always my pleasure to bring you this month's district update. Starting off, we're very excited to share some progress on expanding professional learning opportunities to support the skills and growth of our operational and ASME staff. One of the many trainings that they have recently attended was for Microsoft Excel, which consisted of tailored learning sessions provided by digital learning specialists that have equipped data entry and registrar staff to manage and analyze data with greater accuracy and efficiency. Our ELL paraprofessionals have also participated in training and collaboration with federal programs. This training that you see pictured here highlights the partnership between paraprofessionals and general education teachers while introducing strategies to support students using the WIDA framework. Our prevention and intervention specialists have participated in enhanced training and partnership principles, and it's enabling specialists to better collaborate with teachers, counselors, and staff to support at-risk students in our district. And I believe, last but not least, our plant operators have been participating in some professional development. Staff attended the Florida School Plant Management Association Conference, earning certifications to expand their expertise and ensure excellence in facilities management. The overwhelmingly positive feedback reflects the value of these initiatives for both professional development and daily operations. And moving forward, we are absolutely committed to recognizing staff contributions and continuing to enhance these opportunities to support their success. The Florida High School Athletic Association recently announced its fall academic team champions for the 2024 season. Each Martin County High School earned a top-five finish in at least one sport, with all three football teams in the county earning a top-10 finish in the state. The Martin County High School Football Team claimed the top spot in their class, and South Fork High School's Football Team took the second spot. Additionally, 15 Martin County School District teams were named among the state's top-10 academic performers in their respective classes. The FHSAA Academic Champion Team Program celebrates excellence both in competition and in the classroom. This prestigious program recognizes teams across all FHSAA sanctioned and recognized sports, awarding the title of Academic Team Champion in each classification. The eligible sports team must achieve a minimum unweighted grade point average of 3.0 on a 4.0 scale. These averages are then evaluated against other schools in the state with similar enrollment sizes, highlighting outstanding academic achievement alongside athletic commitment. Recently, both WPTV and WPBF 25 News both featured an incredible story of compassion and community spirit at Murray Middle School. Parents and community members came together to support Israel Cruz, who is a beloved custodian, and his wife, who works in the district's maintenance department after Hurricane Milton unfortunately left their family with a damaged home and three totaled vehicles. Through their kindness and determination, families at Murray Middle School raised funds to gift Israel and his wife a car, proving the power of unity in Martin County. Let's watch the moment this heartwarming story was captured and celebrate our community going all- and celebrate our community going all in Martin.
New at 6:00, this week marks two months since that deadly tornado outbreak from Hurricane Milton devastated parts of our area, from the Palm Beaches to the Treasure Coast. Murray Middle School in Port Salerno saw extensive damage, as did nearby homes and businesses. The school's custodian was among those dealing with the destruction after his family's home and cars were damaged in the storm. Our Angela Rosier shows us how his community came together to give him a special gift.
I told you, I told you I was gonna make it happen.
Israel Cruz couldn't believe it, but it happened. In fact, when he was told he needed to attend a school meeting, his wife says he didn't know what was going on.
But he thought he was in trouble.
I think he was in trouble.
Yeah, he said, I've been thinking all day, what's going on?
Murray Middle School custodian was presented with a new car Tuesday afternoon. When Martin County School District officials found out he lost his vehicles and his house was damaged from tornado spawn by Hurricane Milton, PTA member Chrissy Roush and her husband Kevin got to work.
We went about, he texted a neighbor who just, he was like, do you want to do a God thing? And he was like, yep, I'm in. Tell me how much, what you need, where. And I texted a bunch of friends, and people just started answering back, sending money. We were able to make it happen.
They partnered with Ascent Church and Wallace Nissan to launch a fundraiser. They raised $9,700.
When somebody tells you they're gonna get you a car, they're kind of like, whatever, maybe. But I think it was awesome to see it come to fruition and with the help of so many other people.
Big smiles.
School officials say they wanted to help because Cruz has become a beloved figure in the school. Cruz and his family are thankful.
He means a lot to us. I'm so thankful for, for all, yeah, for, for this, for, I mean, for everything. They've been doing a lot. Actually, they went home, they brought us water, I mean, food. Yeah, they've been so nice to us.
Angela Rosier, WPBF 25 News.
And tonight's last slide for the district update. We wanted to give an update on our Specialty Pathways Program and let the residents of Martin County know that the possibilities are endless when you decide to enroll your children in the Martin County School District, especially through one of our Specialty Pathway Programs. Families can apply through school choice to one of our unique programs designed to engage, inspire, and prepare students for bright futures. The district has designated the following schools as specialty pathways for the upcoming school year, beginning in 2025. At the elementary level, we have Bessie Creek Elementary, that has been designated as a Cambridge International School, Jensen Beach Elementary, which is now known as the Center for Environmental Stewardship, Pinewood Elementary is going to be our Communications Academy, and Seawind Elementary School is going to be the district's Leadership Academy. At the middle school level, Dr. David L. Anderson Middle School is now the Pre-Medical Academy in the district. Hidden Oaks is our Cambridge Pre-ACE Academy. Indian Town Middle is our Hospitality and Tourism Academy. Murray Middle is going to be our Agricultural Academy, and Stewart Middle Engineering and Entrepreneurship Academy. Of course, at the high school level, students can apply for any signature program, whether it be AP, IB, or ACE, ROTC programs, or any of the high school career and technical education programs or academies at any of our three high schools. Applications are now open in the Parent Focus Portal. Martin County residents only need to apply if they wish for their child to attend a school that they're not currently zoned for. And that concludes this month's district update. Until, I guess, next month, next year, rather, you can find us wherever you scroll. We're on all social media channels and on our website as well, martinschools.org.
Thank you, Derek. Okay, we will now move on to our Superintendent update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This last couple weeks, I had the honor of attending the 79th Annual FSBA FADJ Joint Conference in Tampa alongside all of our distinguished board members. The conference underscored the board and I's continuous efforts to push ourselves to learn, grow, collaborate, and innovate as we strive to meet the needs of our students, families, and staff. This year's theme was game changers, highlighting the critical role of teamwork, innovation, and leadership as we navigate the challenges and opportunities in education. And I cannot, I know other superintendents cannot say this, but it brings me no greater joy and honor than to thank all of our board members for being in attendance. Not everybody can say that. Some board members are not able to make it. But I want the community to know that our board was dedicated, and every single board member was in attendance at least one of the days, if not all of the days. And I greatly appreciate that partnership together. Thank you. I'm also proud to announce that our district has been selected as this recipient, excuse me, of Cognia's 2024 Circle of Excellence Award, a prestigious state-level honor recognizing the district's dedication to educational excellence and leadership. Cognia is a national network focused on advancing educational outcomes and awards this honor to school districts annually that organize themselves and exemplify around the following: empowering communities to help learners and achieve their full potential, driving innovation and growth to create new opportunities for our students, and promoting excellence, equity, and integrity throughout the entire educational organization. We are incredibly honored to receive this award, and I just want to take a moment to thank all of our staff, our families, who were a part of this, and we will be accepting this award later on in January at their Orlando Conference. I'm also thrilled to share an exciting new communication initiative. This is a long time coming. I think anybody that you'd ask at the district office would tell you that I've been eagerly awaiting since the day I became Superintendent for our studio to open so that we can start podcasting and reaching the community and at-large in a whole new way. And we were able to kick that off this past weekend, where our first podcast was released on Sunday evening. The podcast will serve as a platform for the district to connect directly with our community in a fresh and new, engaging way. Each episode is going to feature special guests, including staff members, students, community partners, and leaders to discuss upcoming district initiatives, celebrate the many successes that are happening throughout the district, and share any important updates that may be coming down the pike. The goal of the All in Martin podcast is to keep our families, employees, and stakeholders all informed while showcasing the incredible work happening across our schools and the departments. Whether you're driving into new programs, sharing student achievements, or providing insights into future plans, the podcast is designed to highlight the power of collaboration and our shared commitment to student success. We're excited to invite everyone to tune in, stay informed, and be part of the conversation. The first episode did air, and we will be on Spotify, YouTube, and hopefully expanding our streaming platforms in the near future. And last but certainly not least, would like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a happy holiday. Together, we've achieved so much in a short period of time going through to December. That will not stop in January when we return. The sign that was just installed in my office, "All Gas, No Brakes," is exactly that, "All Gas, No Brakes." And the momentum will continue in January when we return. So I wish all of our staff, family, and students a very happy holiday. Get rest and be safe when you return to us. We will be ready to roll. And I just wish that, thank you all for being a part of the district family and your role in helping to make Martin County a wonderful place to learn, grow, and work. Thank you.
Okay. I'm looking at these information-only reports. Bear with me. Is there, is, is there, there's an asterisk next to Lana Barros? Are you presenting?
Just a few.
No? Okay. Go ahead.
So I noticed, Dr. Laws, on the assessment update, you indicated that schools and district leadership are going to be reviewing the data from Progress Monitoring 2. So will we get a deeper report on that at some point, or? Okay, thank you. And, and then I also wanted to thank Carter for the report that he gave us, 1508, for the ARP funds closeout data. I see that out of our $31.599 million, that the portion that was left on, that we left and sent back, that was from just us, not counting charter schools, was $34,849. The charter schools, including charter schools, it was $158,000, because the charters had more that they didn't spend. But I think that's commendable, that we were able to spend that much money. It's like a tenth of a percent is what the number is that we actually sent back. And I also think it's important for the community to know that the Martin County School District, different from most other districts in the state of Florida, the board took ownership of how that money was distributed and had oversight over that to be sure that it was going in the direction that was identified. And because our main things are policy and budget, that we did step up and do that. And I know that didn't happen in all the other districts around the state, but I am joyful that we were able to do that. So thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna go to 10.01, Proposed 2025-26 School Calendar?
Oh, 16.01.
Go to that first, okay.
I think we have to vote on it or anything.
Okay, we will go to Board Member Information Share, Committee Appointments. Anyone want to start?
I just would like to ask a question, just kind of how we ended up here, Madam Chair. I think, is it you that decided the list, or? I'm just, I'm new here, so I just wanted to kind of find out how everybody got into their particular slots.
Sure, well, everyone submitted what they were looking to be a part of. And then I did have the final say on what was submitted. And I came up with this, hoping to give everybody mostly what they asked for. Do you have something specific?
Well, and now's the time to say if you do, and we can talk about it and work through it. You want something?
Is there a specific item?
Yeah, there was, there was two items that I had requested that I was just curious about, and...
Well, what, what happened was, we had, in several, tell me what the items are, and I'll, I'll give you, you know, a blow-by-blow.
I submitted for the Children's Services Council, and I just was curious at why I didn't get that. And then the other one was the Palm City Chamber. It looks like we have me and Mrs. Powers there. And as many of you know, I'm on the board of the Stewart-Martin Chamber. I'm their Vice President. And I wondered if that X could be moved down. So we had the, me and Mrs. Pritchett for Stewart-Martin County and Mrs. Powers for Palm City.
Sure, that was not meant to give it to you. It was noted that Mrs. Powers is with the Palm City. That X can certainly be moved.
Okay.
Okay? And the Children's Services Council, we had several people ask to be on that council, and I had to make a decision based upon who asked. And that, that's the decision that I made.
Right.
Anyone else?
No, but if you want, I mean, I think now is the time, if you, whoever got it, you can, we can talk about the appointments, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Sure, we can talk about the appointments if you'd like to.
I'm, I'm fine. I just wanted to know more about the process more than, so that for next year. I'm new, this is my second meeting.
Okay.
And I just wanted to kind of understand the process so that if I have some interest in some of those different things for the future, I'm fine with it for this year with that, with that move in the chambers. But I'm just kind of preparing for, for the future and how I might be able to get involved on certain committees and certain places. So, because there, there isn't much really that's said, and we can't talk to each other. It was just basically, we apply, and then there's this list. So I'm trying to bridge the gap of how we get from the list to the final list and kind of what the thinking was.
Sure.
So I could understand for the future. But I'm fine with, with everything that's, that we've done there.
Okay.
Well, and I know, like, it's been done like that for a long time. And I, I don't necessarily think that it has to be done like that every year. I know the county does it a little bit differently. So if we want to look at a new process moving forward, I think that that's an appropriate thing for us to talk about. If we want to go through them all, that's what the county does. They kind of go through them, and then they decide as a group who is going on what committees.
Sure.
So, but if there's something, if there's something I have that you want, I'm, I'm willing to trade. If there's something that really interests you that, you know, I, I think I would be open to that. So if you, you know, just let me know.
Yeah, and just let me know, so I can let Diane know. But also, I'm certainly, as, you know, if the board, if the board's pleasure, we can put an upcoming agenda item to discuss all the committees and, and kind of talk it out that way.
Yeah.
Sure, we could do a workshop.
Yeah, just because, rather than just, you know, checking off a box doesn't really show, like, what interest you have. If you're like, I love being a part of this, and I want, I think that should be conveyed versus just like, I'm checking boxes, and maybe I'm checking it out of reluctance because I've done it for years, maybe I'm checking it because I really love it. And I think more discussion might clear the waters, that people know, like, where they're truly interested in, so that they can get where they're passionate about.
That makes sense.
Okay, thanks.
So we'll, we'll do that at an upcoming workshop, Diane? All right. Go ahead.
So I have a question about the chamber appointment. So the representatives to the chambers, which, what did we change? There's...
Marsha's going to be the Palm City representative, and Brian is gonna be with me for the Stewart-Martin Chamber.
And so when we say representative, I only did the Palm City Chamber because they had asked me to be an ex officio on their board. I still attend most all of the chambers at some point. Not, not every time, but I try to make my rounds around each one. So, you know, I'm not on the board of the Indian Town Chamber, but I am listed. So there's not any real, I just go. I know Jen goes sometimes to Indian Town as well. I think everybody kind of goes when you, when there's something going on.
Yes.
Does, does Indian Town have an ex officio position for?
They do not.
Okay.
And I just want to thank Mrs. Powers for being on the Palm City Chamber Board. It's a unique situation, because that's my district. But because I'm on the Board of Directors of the Stewart-Martin Chamber, I can't serve on both. So with me being out of play, rather than having them have no representative, Mrs. Powers has stepped up to, to fill that seat, and I appreciate that in my district.
All right, so Diane, I'm gonna give you this. Thank you, everyone. And if you do make changes, could you just let me know through Diane, so I know what the changes were? Right, if, we talked about if someone looks at this after today and maybe wants to make a switch, just let us know. That's all. Okay? All right. So now we can move to 10.01. At 5 o'clock, we will break for public comment. So, Dr. Moriarty, you wanted this item to be discussed, so please, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we talked about the school calendar last time. And I know we've discussed this in the past, and there's a couple of points I wanted to make about the upcoming calendar going forward. For one, for the last two Veterans Days, I believe we've had those days off in the district. Is that correct, for the last two years?
Not this past year, but before. And it was actually longer than two years.
Okay. So, and I know that it sounds like the board wants that day off, which I'm fine with. But I just wanted to bring up a few points. Number one, I feel like the district really celebrated veterans in a great way with that day in school. And I just wanted to make that point and thank the district and the staff, as a lot of veterans were in school there. This year, Veterans Day falls on a Tuesday. So you've got Veterans Day on a Tuesday, you've got the weekend before, and then you've got that Monday. So I'm just a little concerned that there may be people thinking, I have Tuesday off, I have the weekend off. Do I call out and have a four-day weekend there? And number three, by having that day off for Veterans Day, we're giving a five-day start week to the students. So basically, we're going back on now August 11th. And one of the things, we, we had this school calendar committee meet and make recommendations to the board. And that was one of the things that they stressed, was that they wanted to have a shorter week instead of the full five days. And with that full five days, students are starting on August 11th. Teachers are going back on Friday, August 1st. back on Friday, August 1st, with an optional day on July 31st. So, I just didn't know how well that would be received. So, I thought I'd bring that up for discussion. The other possibility to be changed here is, I know it came up about the Super Bowl and having the day off after the Super Bowl. And the point was made that if we go on Veterans Day, then we should have that day. But the thing is, Super Bowl is a big day. 123 million people watch the Super Bowl. Maybe people don't realize it, but it's a very popular event, especially for families. That is a late night on a Sunday night. So, it just feel like if we are going to take that Veterans Day and give that day off, maybe we could listen to the calendar committee on the Super Bowl and basically give that February 9th day off instead of the 23rd, because there's going to be a lot of people not in school on February 9th. The 16th, Monday, is President's Day, which is off, and then they'd have the 23rd off. That'd be three Mondays in a row where kids are probably not going to school. So, if we want to stick to where we're at on the Veterans Day, which it sounded like that's where the board was, maybe they would consider moving that, that day off on the 23rd, that professional learning day, back to the 9th, so that we could at least honor the calendar committee in that way, since we're going to do a change with the other one. Thank you.
No, I, I, I do think that, and I appreciate you noticing that often when we give a Tuesday or Thursday off, people take a four-day weekend. And we have that multiple times. I mean, we've got that happening, I think, for Rasha Shauna in September, we have it in October, for Yom Kippur. So, yeah, and we've struggled with that in the past, even giving the early release days and making the early release days, because there's usually a problem when you do an early release day on a Friday, that people think, well, it's early release, I might as well not come in. So, that has been something that's, and, and you look at other districts' calendars, and they, they kind of, it's like, they just go to school. They don't have that many. But I mean, yeah, I can appreciate your, your noticing that that's a Tuesday. That's all I have.
So, I know there's a, there's a lot of intricacies of when things can happen, like, you have to have the same number of days in the first semester, or how the balance works. And then, I think this solution was the easiest solution. And I, I do also appreciate the, what was put into Veterans Day, not just this past school year, but in years past, even when we've had the day off. And I think we've gotten reassurance from the superintendent that that will continue to happen in preparation. And I am absolutely fine looking at other opportunity, you know, other scenarios. I mean, we have, because as, as a parent, I, I think we're going to have the same issue coming back after Memorial Day, that week after Memorial Day. That is, people are going to throw their hands up and say, I'm, no way, we're starting our summer vacation. So, I think we have those scenarios throughout the calendar, and the same with Thanksgiving. I don't know how we got to, you know, having the whole week of Thanksgiving off. And then we're going to have after Memorial Day. And I know that that's going to be a very light week. After that, May, May 27th or 8th, whatever the date is, and then coming back on that Tuesday. It's, but I'm happy to, like, sit down and work through and how we can manipulate it and what, what some different scenarios are.
Yeah, and, and I met with Dr. Miller this morning, and she was very helpful, by the way. Thank you, Dr. Miller. And we went through a lot of different scenarios, and there's only so much you can do with it, with the calendar, honestly. There's, there's state statute days that, that, there's certain holidays, religious holidays that have to be observed. There's, this year is just kind of an odd year where there's not a ton of wiggle room. It's basically, give Veterans Day or go back a day later. So, and I know, I could hear from the board at the last meeting that that was kind of the way they wanted to go. So, my thought was, okay, go to, give them that day off, move that professional learning day to February 9th, this way you're listening to the calendar committee that worked so hard on that, and go that route. So, with, with that, I would move to approve 10.01 with that change of February 23rd being in school and February 9th being a professional learning day.
So, we're saying that now you want the teachers to come back. Do you think that the next, the day, you're saying February 9th is a professional learning day, which I guess could be an optional day for teachers? Is that optional, or is it a mandatory day?
That day is actually a professional learning day. It's the teacher work days that are optional. So, if they choose to work the optional teacher work day, which is the preschool day, then they can take off a different work day, not the professional learning day.
Would we offer extended day that day?
I'll defer to Mr. LaBarbara about extended day. I know he's been working very hard on make, providing coverage.
I would say yes, we would definitely offer it like we would the other days.
So, every professional learning day and every day that teachers are in but students are out, we're offering extended day?
Correct, and we're also working on another scenario too for preschool as well.
So, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Motion fails for lack of a second.
Do I move approval of the calendar as presented?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Dr. Moriarty, oppose. Okay, thank you. So, we will begin public comment a few minutes early. Citizen input is vital to the improvement of our district. Most times, your remarks may be listened to without comment from the board or superintendent. This does not mean they are heard with any less intensity or concern. Where appropriate, the superintendent and staff will investigate your comments and report back to you and the board with an answer. We thank you for taking the time and having the concern to make our district better. Your presentation to the board should not exceed three minutes. Letters or statements from others not present can be given to our clerk, who will be sure that each school board member and the superintendent receive a copy. To keep our records straight and authentic, our policy does not permit you to read the statements of others into the record. First up, we have Christina Fiori, followed by Megan McChrystal.
Good evening, Superintendent Maine and school board members. I'm grateful that it seems that the pool at Martin County High School will be open soon, and there's a willingness to fix the pool. But when will this happen? I read the report from Harvard Jolly, and in the report, according to the pool professional, there were no conditions observed that would prevent the pool's use. So, why are the kids not swimming in the pool yet? I know that the report also mentioned some electrical issues that were discovered during an assessment done by a local electrical contractor at the request of a concerned party. Who was the local contractor, and where is the report from that assessment? I do have an email from the school district on August 26th, prior to the shutdown of the pool, acknowledging that the school district had had an electrician review issues at the pool. This email states that there were no issues with the electrical panel and that a surge protector was needed to prevent issues with a chemical feeder system, which was scheduled to be installed. There was no mention in this email of any danger to anyone swimming in the pool, so it was unclear why the pool was then shut down when it was. Harvard Jolly's assessment states that the new surge protector was indeed installed prior to their assessment on September 13th. Why was the pool not opened at that time? Why did the kids go for an entire high school swim season not swimming in their pool? The last time the pool closure was up for discussion was six years ago, just before we voted on the half-cent sales tax. It was suggested to wait and see how the vote would go before deciding anything long-term for the pool. Why wasn't the longevity of the pool worked in back then? Are we going to have to go through this again in five to seven years? Being that I'm someone who always votes yes in giving the school district more money when asked, the quarter cent sales tax sounds fair to me at first. When I really start to think about it, I wonder why we would single out the pool. When the half-cent sales tax was presented, it was known and well advertised that two elementary schools needed to be replaced. It was not well advertised all of the projects that would also be paid for with that tax. If I had been asked to vote only to spend $35 million on a new gym, I might have said no. I had never seen the existing gym, did not know why it needed to be replaced. I also have no personal interest in that project. Same goes for a golf course revitalization for over $2 million. When these things were buried in with the two elementary schools and many other capital projects that I was told were necessary, I trusted the school board that there was a need, and I voted yes. At the time, I was not part of the pool community and would have had the same thought process had it been included then. In the last six years, over a billion dollars has been spent on capital projects in this district. We were not asked to vote on a single one of those projects individually. What is the motivation behind the pool being the only project that would be singled out like that now, especially after a congressman has offered help with the pool? Please recognize how special it is to have this pool on the school campus and get it back open and keep it open for the kids to use. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan McChrystal, followed by Dick Landrum.
Good evening, Mr. Maine and school board members. My name is Megan McChrystal, and I'm a teacher at Murray Middle School. I'd like to thank you for the positive administration changes we made. We love the discipline Mr. Beasley and Mrs. Roth have brought to our campus. Also, thank you for finding it in the budget to pay for ISS at the middle school levels. It was much needed. Why I'm here tonight is, is it always amazes me, but I guess it shouldn't surprise me, that so many teachers are irate when they don't get a raise they think they deserve. We know our pay, we know what our pay will be when we sign up for the job. We can see the breakdown of our entire career. So, thank you for the 3.1% raise this year. I would just like to say that Kelly Coleman and the union do not speak for all of the teachers. In fact, they don't even speak for the 60% state legislated required membership participation amount. I'd like to thank you for not holding up the teachers' raise while the union president holds up negotiations for his teacher on assignment request. The narrative that the district is at fault for holding up the raise or negotiations is simply false. I have filed the paperwork against their supposed 60% last May, and I will file again when they don't have 60% by the cutoff date again this May. The fact that the union tried to hold up negotiations from August, when the 3.1% raise was proposed, till just recently for the wording of his teacher on assignment to benefit only himself, shows how out of touch they are while our teachers, while their teachers suffer from record inflation. The union dues are too high, and they have shown time and time again that they're only interested in representing the 20-plus-year teachers in our district. Our teachers deserve better representation than our current union. Hopefully, perk and justice will kick in soon, but until then, thank you for not caving into a union who does not represent all of us and told us not to vote for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Dick, Dick Landrum.
I'm here to talk about the Coach Dick Wells Training Center pool, the community pool. I've been a strong advocate for public education and feel that it should be the heart and soul of a democratic republic. But lately, I've been so disappointed with the school district and board. Going through yet another save the pool campaign because the district and board doesn't want to maintain the pool has made me think that you are as incapable of something as simple as maintaining a pool. You can't be very good at all the intricacies of running a whole school district. The district's charge when the pool was built by the public was that the district could use the pool as long as they maintain it, nothing else. The pool was built as a community pool. Its primary use was for the public, not for one high school swim season each year. The day-to-day operations of the pool were always a responsibility of the pool manager, who is also the head coach of the Martin County High School Swim Team and the head coach of the age group teams. Except for eliminating community programs, the district has completely, has been completely hands-off of the operations through all the head coaches from 1975 until they started making their own arbitrary rules this year. The district has eliminated most of the community programs with their overreach. Most of the programs were eliminated 17 years ago, and the district has used its unauthorized policies to keep the pool at a minimal use level. I have written multiple emails to the district and board members with no direct response from the superintendent nor any of the board members. So, on the next page, that you're, you're going to get a copy of this, on the next page, there are questions not answered. I am asking that all the questions, all the questions again, and under the Freedom of Information Act, I'm asking for a direct response from each of you. To answer the questions based on district records and from your understanding of why the district thinks that it is, it is under their purview to make their decisions regarding the pool. Lately, the, the board complains that the community thinks they're not transparent. Let's have a vocabulary view, transparent, easily seen through, recognized, detected, manifest, obvious, open, frank, candid. Not answering questions from the public doesn't match up with any of these definitions. If you want to be transparent, answer the questions on page two of the document I'm sending you. These include things like mismanagement of funds, not telling us why you're doing certain things when we ask over and over again. And I want to ask one more question on, end of that, to have the bids been let out yet on the current project. The way that this has transpired and the lack of response from the district and board is a disgrace. We charge the district board with our children's education, and you are setting a terrible example. Thank you.
Thank you. So, anyone else that wants to make a public comment?
Sorry about that. We will now be moving to action-only items. There is no school board travel. Can I have a motion to accept 1802, request authorization to utilize Palm Beach County School District musical instruments and accessories?
I'm moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five unanimous. Okay, 18.03, requisitions to be approved for purchase orders over $100,000. May I have a motion?
I'm moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. 1804, Stuart Middle School Phase Two Replacement Building, Project FFE Proposal Approval, Mark Seacrest. May I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve 18.04.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. 1805, items for January 9th Legislative Delegation Meeting, myself. We've been invited to attend. Does anyone have anything that they want to bring to that meeting?
I think just our approved legislative agenda.
Okay.
And then also, the superintendent and I had a conversation with our advocacy person and talking, we would really like to make sure that we get together any expenses that we had associated with hurricane or tornadoes, really, and make sure that we've recovered every single dollar that we possibly can, because I look at the instruments, and that's made me think of Murray Middle, like, want to make sure that, because there's going to be some dollars available this legislative session for hurricane relief. And so, we want to make sure that we recover everything that we've expended related to that.
So, can I have a motion to approve 18.05?
Ms. Roberts has a question.
Yeah. So, I'm looking at the wording on the full-day VPK, Ms. Powers. Do you think that's, needs to be wordsmithed at all? It says, "Support legislation aimed at permitting districts to provide full-day VPK and/or other wraparound services, as well as the reduction of regulations for associated licensure of district personnel."
So, I would say... So, I would say that districts already have the authority to offer full-day VPK. It's just not funded full day, so. But I thought we changed it to just giving school districts the flexibility to offer those wraparound services for VPK, right? And limit, you know, and have a clarify, because I think it's, I think that they can, but to clarify that we can have VPK students on our campuses outside of the VPK day for like extended day.
Yeah, so I'm thinking it's not the licensure of district personnel. I'm thinking it has to do with the licensing of the...
Well, if we, based on the theory now for VPK, if we were to offer after-school extended day for VPK students, the extended day program would have to be licensed by DCF and our employees would have to have those DCF licensing requirements, forty-five hours of training. There's like licensing requirements that they would have to have, that they currently don't have to have.
So, how would you fix, adjust that statement?
Oh, I would say... Wait, this is just a form.
It's the second page that says ignite together at the bottom.
So, I wouldn't even call it full-day VPK, because as much as we would like to be funded for full-day VPK, I think it's unreasonable to ask for full-day VPK. I mean, we've essentially were told and have been kind of told pre-FSBA that that is not going to happen, and we were told at FSBA that that is not going to happen. I mean, I guess we could keep asking for it. But it doesn't, I wouldn't say support legislation aimed at permitting to, I mean, if we want to keep the ask for the financial piece to have a full-day VPK program, a full school day VPK program, not like eight AM to five PM when parents can pick up, it would be like a school day VPK. So, I would say if we want to keep that, it's, I don't think, I think it should be a full school day VPK if we're going to keep it.
What hours is that?
It's like, would be like a typical elementary school, coming in and leaving at what the elementary school does. That would just be the school day. I don't think, I honestly don't think it will be something that will be approved from a physical standpoint. But then I would also say, we, we can, we can offer an extended hours for VPK. We get, we get reimbursed for five hundred and forty hours for every child that attends VPK. There is nothing that prevents the school district from extending that, and we have, I know some districts extend it for ESE students. We extend, we do, do we do extended VPK for ESE? I know in Indian River County they do. So, I mean, there's nothing that prevents us from doing that within the school day. It's really the other piece of it that I'm most concerned about is I would like to have VPK on our school campuses and then be able to offer wraparound extended day services so that, because a lot of families don't participate because they have, they can't drop their child off at eight in the morning and then pick them up at eleven. They're at work. So, that's kind of my...
So, would you support changing that to, from full-day VPK to the title being District Provided Early Learning? Change the title to that, and then change the narrative to say, "Support legislation for districts to provide full school day VPK and/or other wraparound services, as well as the streamlining of regulations for associated licensure." Is that...
I would like the school district to be exempt from the DCF requirements. I think we're exempt from that in every other level. I don't know why they wouldn't be, but...
As well as exemption?
I mean, quite honestly, I, we can go ahead and get our people licensed. We can do that now.
Yeah. So, if it says, "Support legislation for districts to provide full day, full school day VPK and/or other wraparound services, as well as the exemption from DCF licensure?"
Well, and I think you could say, "As well as the exemption of regulations associated with..." Okay?
Exemption from DCF licensure and childcare regulations?
Yeah.
That work?
I mean, if everything, everybody's okay with that. Those are just my personal opinions.
Who created this form? Where did that form come from? Like, who wrote that form with all the legislative priorities that we're looking at?
We didn't, we didn't write it.
From the workshop from before I was in office? Okay. I mean, basically, this is a legislative delegation meeting. These are general topics we're going to be discussing. I don't want to get just caught up in wordsmithing too many things here, so.
Well, I don't want to give them something that isn't clear as to what we're asking for, what we're, what our, what our ask is. You know what I mean? I mean, I don't want them to get, when we walk away after they've heard forty people, I don't, and they look back at this, and this is the page that they have to look at, I don't want them to get confused as to what they've heard or seen, is my...
I'm just saying, in the grand scheme of things, when we go to Tallahassee, you know, changing out one word is probably not going to make much of a difference. I think we're just kind of pulling at straws here, but anyway, let's bring it home, and which version do you guys like?
Well, I don't support what we're asking for in that bullet, so...
And that's why I'm asking, where'd it come from? So, that was the workshop and someone wrote this up and now we're saying we don't support it?
We did not agree to full day, to ask for full-day VPK, for funding full-day VPK. That is a priority for FSBA. They still have it on their agenda, I think, for full-day funding, not anything else. It's strictly a budget ask, which is...
Isn't going to happen.
Not going to happen. I would rather give, have the ability of the district to offer either a, the current VPK program and then offer the wraparound services to start, because those families, a lot of the families that we're really trying to recruit, if we're able to do that on our campus, they will come to our VPK, and then if we provide the after-care services, they'll stay on our campuses and we can, from, even if we don't even do a school day, it's from eleven AM till the parent picks them up, or they're either not going to go to VPK or they're going to, they could go, you know, they can go somewhere else too, if there's room. It just opens up more slots for VPK in Martin County, and just, and for our school district.
Superintendent, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to say, the most important piece is the DCF licensure, so that we can provide those services as a, the wraparound services as an educate, as an, you know, organization. So, that would be the biggest, most important piece that we're asking for. To Dr. Moriarty's point, once the board comes up with language, it's submitted to Greg Black, and Greg Black proofs it and then sends us language back. I think that one just was a misunderstanding of what specifically we were, we were asking for.
Thank you.
So, can I get a motion for the updated language that we've discussed on... Yeah, and I'm thinking now to just make it District Provided Early Learning, Support Legislation for Exemption from DCF Licenseur and Childcare Regulations for VPK.
For VPK students.
For VPK students.
Make that motion for us.
I'll second that motion that you made, Ms. Roberts. Did you make that motion?
Yeah, so I moved to change bullet number two to District Provided Early Learning and the language to say, "Support Legislation for Exemption from DCF Licenseur and Childcare Regulations for VPK." District Provided VPK Students. District VPK Students.
I have a motion from Ms. Roberts, a second from Mrs. Powers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right. Now, we're going to go on to nineteen, First Review of School Board Policy. Before I begin, is there anyone who would like to make a public comment on any of these policies? Being none, we'll go to nineteen oh one, one, zero, zero, one, District Organization. Can I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Russell, a second by Ms. Powers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so moved. Nineteen point oh two, Development of Administrative Procedures. Do I have a motion to approve nineteen point oh two?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Power, Ms. Roberts, a second by Ms. Powers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Nineteen oh three, Employment Contracts. Do I have a motion to approve?
That's removed.
Oh, I apologize. Moving right along. Nineteen point oh four, Working Days. This policy is a recension. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Approve nineteen point oh four? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. We have nineteen oh five, Standards of Ethical Conduct. May I have a motion to approve nineteen point oh five?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Nineteen point oh six, it's also twelve, ten point oh one, thirty-two, ten point oh one, forty-two, ten oh one, Self-Reporting of Criminal Charges and Traffic Situations. This is a recension. May I have a motion to approve nineteen point oh six?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Nineteen point oh seven, twelve forty-four, thirty-two forty-four, Professional Leave. This is also a recension. May I have a motion to approve nineteen point oh seven?
Motion to approve nineteen point oh seven?
I have a motion to approve by Ms. Russell and a second by Ms. Roberts. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Nineteen point zero eight, Principals Meeting. This is also a recension. May I have a motion to approve nineteen point oh eight?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Moriarty and a second by Ms. Powers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Nineteen point oh nine, Benefits for Non-Represented Staff. This is also a recension. May I have a motion to approve nineteen point oh nine?
Motion to approve nineteen point oh nine?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Russell, a second by Dr. Moriarty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Nineteen point ten, Lessened Plans. This is also a recension. May I have a motion to approve nineteen point ten?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Dr. Moriarty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Nineteen point eleven, Articulation and Access to Florida College System Institutions. May I have a motion to approve nineteen point eleven?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Nineteen point twelve, Requirements for Extracurricular Participation. This is also a recension. May I have a motion to approve nineteen point twelve?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Russell, a second by Ms. Powers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Nineteen point thirteen, School Supply Sale. This is also a recension. May I have a motion to approve nineteen point thirteen?
Move to approve nineteen thirteen.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Moriarty, a second by Ms. Powers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Nineteen point fourteen, Co-Curricular Responsibilities. This is also a recension. May I have a motion to approve nineteen point fourteen?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Dr. Moriarty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Nineteen point fifteen, Faculty Meetings. This is also a recension. May I have a motion to approve nineteen point fifteen?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So, now we have open to the board.
Do we go in order, or how do we do this?
No, you go however. We're good, we'll start down there.
Okay. I just want to extend our thoughts and prayers to the Madison, Wisconsin, community for the deadly shooting there this week, and it's just an unspeakable tragedy, and it's just with a heavy heart that our thoughts are with them. I also want to thank our security, Mr. Frangella, and our security department for keeping us safe. They do a great job. I want to salute, our three high schools have really done some incredible efforts here. Martin County High School's National Honor Society adopted three families for the holidays, and they're assisting thirteen children, so kudos to them. And then, as Ms. Paulson mentioned, Jensen Beach High School writing letters overseas, and South Fork High School doing bell ringing and helping with Rena's House of Blessings. I think our high schools have done a phenomenal job stepping up in this holiday season. In my, it's my first month here on the job, so I want to salute our staff for their incredible responsiveness. I've had so many different emails coming in from different people, and I can always forward it and count on our staff to be responsive and have great ideas, so I wanted to thank them for helping me get my feet wet here this first month. To our superintendent, it's been a pleasure working with you this first month, and I appreciate all your help, answering all my questions and concerns, and I look forward to working with you even more. And finally, Ms. Falls down the end. Thank you for strating out my calendar and for, this is great having you here. Can you do the rest of my life too, or just the school board? You're wonderful. I just want to thank you for getting everything in order for me. You're amazing. And a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you.
So, you know, Brian, she will send all of your stuff to your other calendars too. She does, she does an amazing job. Just tell her where you need it.
Just enjoying all the shows and performances and things around the district, and thank all the students for sharing their talents, and the faculty and staff for helping get those things up on a stage and performing for us and for the community. Really appreciate that, and wish everybody Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays, and I hope you take this time to really enjoy your families and rejuvenate so that we can hit the ground running in January one.
Thank you. So, yes, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I echo that I hope you all have time to spend, some well-deserved time, to not do anything and not think about the school district and enjoy your families. And a Happy Hanukkah and/or whatever, however you celebrate the holidays, I hope that it's filled with lots of joy and that we are refreshed and ready to...
of joy and that we are refreshed and ready to go on January 6th. Also, I would like to add possibly to either the workshop or a, or the next board meeting, an update on the pool, because I think that there's a lot of misinformation out there. I know from a liability standpoint that it's not as simple as, you know, some, one, one element of the plan being corrected, because unfortunately, and I did speak to our insurer because I'm like, okay, can, can we do this? And it's like, well, once, once we have the plan and we know that there are things that have to be fixed, if something were to happen, we, we are, we would be liable for that. So I just want the public to know that it isn't, we're not stonewalling, but it is about public safety, and hopefully, we can get those things corrected and get the pool open as soon as we possibly can. So just maybe an update from our facility staff and our risk management staff to, to talk about the ins and outs of that so that we, so the public is made aware. And that's it.
Do I go first, or you? Member.
Well, no, you, it doesn't matter.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will piggyback off of Mrs. Powers, because I did have some notes here in transparency, full transparency for the pool. I do want the community to completely understand that the decision to close the pool was not the board's decision. The decision to close the pool was my decision, I am charged with protecting the assets and liability of the district, and so in doing that, after review of the report, I made the determination to keep the pool closed until our risk management team had the opportunity to work with our facilities and maintenance departments to make sure that all corrections have been made to both there and the inspector who will be inspecting the pools liking. I, what the board has committed to fully, and we appreciate, is the commitment to fund the pool and all of the corrections that need to happen so that we are providing a facility that is safe and updated and clean and ready to go for the upcoming swim season. My commitment and obligation is to our students, the board's commitment is to our students, and my commitment along with the board's commitment is that the pool will be opened as quickly as possible for the new swim season. If we can open it sooner after inspection and after everything has been properly mediated, we will certainly do so. It is not the school board that has closed the pool. They have voted to fund the pool and the fixes for the community and have directed staff to move forward in doing so, which we are, and Mrs. Powers and the board, absolutely, we would have no problem in providing an update at the next workshop, because that'll give us more information in January, and Mr. Seacrest has been working incredibly hard with our purchasing department to expedite that process, but the commitment is to have it open and ready for swim season, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'd like to congratulate Joshua Oviedo, who was the School Related Employee of the Year. We went to a really nice celebration last night, and it was really poignant because Jeff Raymond was his teacher, so he got to present him with the award, and I just thought that was really kind of special, so congratulations to him. I want to wish all the staff and all the administration a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, enjoy the time with your family, and we'll see you in January. Thank you. And with that, we're adjourned.